Welcome to May 5, 2022, in Palmer City's State Department of Education meeting. Please stand for the Fledges Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mr. Nusio.
Mr. Roth.
Present.
Mrs. Carpus.
Present.
Mr. Price.
Present.
Mr. Rudolph.
Present.
Mr. Vaughn.
Present. Dr. Smiley, could you please confirm that this meeting is currently being livestreamed?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Can you please monitor the livestreaming throughout the meeting? If there is a problem, please speak immediately so that we can correct the technical difficulties.
It would be immediate, sir.
Thank you. And that basis right to you for your segment, Dr. Smiley.
Sure. First, we have a pretty significant change in the appearance of the boardroom, and we're very proud of that change, and we want to recognize that change. This is actually part of a current art show, but we also are going to rotate artwork throughout the school year so that it'll always have some type of decoration. And we're very grateful to Tiffany Strzokko and her department, Chrissy Kruzak, Amy Zermet, have really been spearheading that. We also have our teachers throughout the district and our department chair. I think that really this is a great addition. I think it really adds something. It really celebrates children and their achievements and their creativity. And so I'm really grateful for all of your work and your leadership on that, as well as your department. We also are recognizing Karen Dendorfer is, in fact, named after her. This is, you know, the Karen that we effectively refer to it as, Karen Dendorfer Boardroom. And so she's got sort of a little shrine over there to Karen, just a sort of a selection of the many awards and commemorations that she received over her long and distinguished career. So we're happy to continue in her memory. So thank you for all of those things. We're excited to continue to rotate in and out. At this time, too, I would like to thank our Parma Schools Foundation, and a number of them are here. And we're going to have Craig Phillips introduce our grant winners. But first, before, just a few words about our Parma Schools Foundation. We're very lucky to have this. I know that a number of our founders are in attendance here. You see Mr. Davis, Mrs. Filippo, Craig will talk to us later, Mrs. Jones is here as well. They really put a lot of time and effort into making sure that we have a strong and viable foundation, which funds opportunities for students and opportunities for students and teachers, I should say. Teacher grants and student scholarships are sort of the most visible way they support our school district, but they are here in many other ways as well. So with that said, we'll turn it over to Craig to lead the presentation of grant recipients for this school year.
Good evening, everyone. Dr. Smiley, President Vaughn, the members of the board, thank you very much for the opportunity to talk briefly about the Parma City Schools Foundation tonight and to recognize the recipients of our fourth annual educator grants process. The Parma City Schools Foundation is a nonprofit organization that was founded in 2011. We are led by a group of eager and dedicated volunteers from all walks of life. The foundation has been guided by our mission of enriching the educational experiences of the children of Parma Heights and Seven Hills. Through rewards and incentives to students, special projects and scholarships, the foundation supports innovation, research, aesthetic enhancements, and special opportunities for students that would not otherwise be available. All of our funding is obtained through our fundraisers, donations, and bequests. Over the years, we are proud to have raised nearly $300,000 to support the Parma City School District. The purpose of our grants process is to seek applications from Parma City School District educators to fund innovative classroom and school-wide projects that may not be possible through the typical school budgeting process. Educator grant recipients must utilize their funding within one year. The maximum amount we award for a grant is $500. Our educator grants committee consists of Janet Smith, who is our co-chair, who was unable to be here tonight, Alan Davis, Barbara Filippo, Sharon O. Jones, Rick Meeks, who couldn't be here tonight, and myself. The committee used a rubric and followed a blind review with names omitted to determine the grant recipients. We say thank you to all of the district's educators who applied for foundation grants this year. This is our fourth year of the educator grants process, and this past spring, we were thrilled to have received a record 36 requests for grant money. Unfortunately, we couldn't award the more than $15,000 that was requested, but we are pleased to award 17 grants in the amount of $7,331.98.
Yay!
Now, we want to offer congratulations to the following grant recipients. Please come forward when your name is called. Please remain up here, and please hold your applause until the end. And thanks to Gary, we're going to take a quick group photo afterward. First of all, Jennifer Adrevet, Lori Hausler, Pamela Peltoni, and Constance Konzel from Denzler Elementary School. Their project is Literature to Promote Accepting Differences, $414. Catherine Bellot from Thorough Park Elementary School. Her project is Adaptive Art Materials for $368. Sarah Blue from Greenbrier Middle School. Her project is Warming Our Way to a Waste-Free World for $491. Erin Brunett, Maria Howie, Rebecca Lloyd, and Laura Stow, who are our elementary literacy specialists. Their project is Literacy for All for $500. Congratulations. Jennifer Hudak-Rusiewitz from Valley Forge High School. Her project is Exploring American Literature Through Graphic Novels and English III for Robert Seer from Parma Senior High School. His project is Colonial Williamsburg Field Trip for $500. Diane Hetzel from Valley Forge High School. Her project is Mini Student Library, $500.
Congratulations.
Amy Fink and Amy Spina from Greenbrier Middle School. Their project is Filling the Yeoman Closet for $500. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My former student.
I know.
Teresa Fowler from Green Valley Elementary School. Her project is One School, One Book for $300.
Joni Gedien from Shiloh Middle School. Her project is See Great, Be Great, Do Great for $497.72. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it. We can please see Shiloh when it's all done.
That'd be great.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Wendy Hungelli from Denzler Elementary School. Her project is Hands-on Climax for $260. Kim Natalli from Parma Senior High School. Her project is From Garden to Table Part 1 for $300. Eileen Malloy from Parma Senior High School. Her project is From Garden to Table Part 2 for $330. Tammy Wright from Parma Park Elementary School. Her project is Flexible Seating Options for $500. Congratulations. Cindy Sutya from Normandy High School. Her project is Creating Connections to Enrich Science Terminology and Engage Students, Kim Ware from Denzler Elementary School. Her project is Pedant Out and In a Reading Buddy, $500. And finally, Debbie Woodward and Belle Pennington from Pleasant Valley Elementary School. Their project is Bag of Books for $411. These are all awesome and innovative projects. Please join me in giving a warm hug.
You guys are going to have to squish in, and some of us are going to crouch down.
We're going to move the tallest in the back.
That's me in the back, right?
Would you guys wave, each of you, on the two of you on the side?
On the other side?
Two and two.
Thanks for the guys.
Nice combination.
I think the guy Jason Penny picked it up.
All right, everybody big smiles. Ready, two, one, two, three. And one, two, three. Eyes open.
Congratulations, Cindy.
Oh, no, I don't need one.
I brought these for you as an oldie in your office for your meetings. You have them in our wallet.
I love it.
Thank you to the foundation for their work to create these different grants. And we have one more award before we get into our meeting, and I want to make sure that we take time to recognize Jayden. Jayden was not actually able to join us last time, so Jayden, if you could come on up. Jayden Cologne, we went through this before, but we were not able to recognize Jayden. He was unable to attend. But his contributions to our athletic program and his achievements in wrestling were so significant, we wanted to make sure that we were able to bring him back. Jayden finished a stellar wrestling career in grand style as he won his third conference championship. He was selected by the coaches of the Great Lakes Conference as the recipient of the Most Valuable Wrestler Award, then went on a postseason run that included a sectional tournament championship, a district tournament runner-up finish, and culminated in a fifth-place finish at the Ohio High School Athletic Association State Wrestling Tournament, which was fifth place in the entire state. This was the highest finish a Parma senior high wrestler has achieved in 30 years. Jayden broke the school record for most wins in a season with 46 and eclipsed the 100-career win milestone this season, as well as finishing with 108 wins in his high school wrestling career. Let's give a round of applause.
All right. Okay. Everyone, big smiles. One, two, three. And one more. One, two, three. Awesome. Thanks for Tom's camera, too.
Tom's camera. Ready? I'll put it in a little bit. One, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, three.
Okay. Where are you looking? What do you think?
Well, I'm trying to set up there in the mound today, so that's why I was wondering if it would fit in.
Okay. Great. Awesome. All good schools. All right, buddy. Yeah, you're welcome. Congratulations.
Congratulations. And if anyone was not sure which board member is a former wrestling coach, I think they all have it.
So this is where I usually say it's a socially appropriate time to leave if you were one of the recipients of an honor. Most have already left, though. They didn't really wait for that. But I will acknowledge that some of you were able to stay. Again, I want to thank, first, the foundation, because they really, this is a year-long effort. They meet once a month, and then there are subcommittee meetings, and there are fundraising efforts, and they really, these are folks that dedicate an awful lot of time, who don't have to do that. And it really is a charitable effort. It really is a noble effort. It's part of what we refer to as a very strong social fabric in our school district. We're very grateful for their efforts, and their work, you know, gets us to nights like tonight, where we can really fund some innovative programs. I'd also like to thank our teachers, though, because our teachers, A, have to have that creativity and dedication, and B, have to really compete to get the dollars. So like we said, there were $13,000 worth of requests, I believe, and about half of that funded. So thank you for your efforts, and thank you for everything you're doing for our students. We know that often we don't have the funding to be as creative as we want, and so we like to see that resiliency that you showed in trying to find funds in any different way. So thank you so much. Now is a socially appropriate time to leave if you were here for the foundation or the Cologne family as well. Thank you very much. Let's give one more round of applause. The only other piece I would like to sort of comment on in terms of my information of the board, first of all, we really, we've worked five months now at sort of honing in on what we think could be a bond issue for the fall. We concluded our fourth round of monthly meetings today. We're grateful for the folks who continue to participate. We'll present sort of their opinions and some of the data they were able to give us in terms of feedback at our next meeting, and I think we have a work session scheduled as well. We have several town halls scheduled. We want to continue to try to help people to understand that we have two distinct tracks. One is consolidation. That's all about current schools that we have and really downsizing our footprint because we really face a pretty substantial deficit for 2026, '27. And then the other piece is new construction, and we've really, that's the energizing piece. That's the piece we're excited about. We really have another month essentially, actually less than that. It's June 2 now. The Ohio Facilities Construction Commission wants to make sure that we have sort of, if we're going to segment, what segment we're going with. So we have some work to do in the next three weeks or so to get us there, but we have a number of meetings scheduled to do that. The only other piece I'd like to mention is there's many things that happen in, you know, these months, right? These spring months, these Aprils, these Mayes that are exciting and kind of remind you of your why, of why you do this. But I really want to recognize that everyone who attended or participated in last week's cultural fair, it was so much more of a victory for our school district than I really thought it would be. Often, we put a lot of time and effort into good displays and good, you know, opportunities for our kids and for our parents, and then, you know, after 5 o'clock, we try to have something, and you just don't see that many people who come. Last week, Byers Field had a buzz to it. It had a buzz from the folks that were there to participate and were really showing what embrace-all means in our district. We had a buzz from, you know, the parents and students that were in attendance, really kind of connecting in a way that we really hadn't tried to connect before. And we really, it was in Cleveland.com today, we did. We stumbled into what will be another tradition, because this was a great Parma night, and a lot of folks worked very hard, our embrace-all advisors worked hard, Chrissy Kruzak was sort of the organizing piece of it. She's the administrative specialist in Tiffany's department. It was something that we were very proud of. We continue to embrace all of our students. Our job is never to judge or to ask why or how or what. Our job is to say, you're in front of us right now, and we're going to embrace you and make sure that we give you everything you can possibly have to succeed in our classrooms. And last week was a great culminating symbolic event, and we look forward to continuing to really recognize those efforts as we go. So those are all of my remarks.
Is there a retirement?
No.
It's not on my list.
It's still on there, but there are not.
Very good. Thank you. All right. Good comments. I think if anyone didn't have the chance to do the fair, you went to the county fair.
It was wonderful.
And Cindy, you were able to make that as well. The Byers.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. It was.
The one I was just talking about.
I'm sorry. I didn't know that he was talking. We talked a little bit about it this afternoon. Don't pick at me, because I'm going to talk more about it, just because you said that.
It was a soft toss.
It was very well attended, which was exciting, you know, to see so many people there. But I overheard so many conversations of people as I was going to all the tables and also spoke with a lot of people at the tables. And I know this was a very valuable experience for a lot of families, some of whom don't always feel as recognized as they felt at that cultural fair. And it was really an outstanding event, and it is something I hope we continue in the future, because it was great for a lot of families, I know.
Excellent.
Thanks for doing it.
Thanks. Thanks for the comments. So that brings us to communications. Mrs. Carpus?
So I have two things. One, reminder, if you ordered plants or flowers for the PTA, the pickup is this weekend. You should have an email that has all the information on where to go. It is a well-oiled machine. Follow the traffic patterns, and everything would be great. The other thing I was going to mention about the cultural fair was the one thing that I was truly impressed by, and I noticed this at the movie nights this summer, is the amount of students that come out, not drug there with their parents, the amount of students that picked up their friends and came out, and they're respectful, and they enjoyed a district function outside of, you know, a dance or something else, and I really liked that. So that was kind of, for me, that was a really big piece, to see that.
Awesome. Jack anything? No? Mark anything?
Sean's got a face.
I'm not ready for you yet, because I have something. So, look out. Communications by Steve. All right. So I went to the Chamber of Commerce dinner the other night when we had the cultural fair, so I missed that, so it was good to hear about that. So I went to that dinner, and the reception prior to the dinner was the Normandy Band, Jazz Band camp, and did an excellent job. So I have a letter here from the Chamber of Commerce for Mr. Zaramba, and it reads, Dear Mr. Zaramba, the Parma Area Chamber of Commerce would like to thank the students of the Normandy Jazz Band for their amazing performance at our Evening with the Mayors event on April 28, 2022. The Jazz Band students were extremely polite and provided an upbeat atmosphere for our guests. We received many compliments on the performance. Thank you, Mr. Zaramba, for organizing your students and preparing them to perform. We are so lucky to have such talented students in our community. We look forward to working with your students again. Sincerely, Megan Cooney. She is the executive director. And I want to thank Mr. Zaramba for having the students there, because that was outstanding, even though my request was for the theme of silent movie. Oh, no, I got it. That's okay. No, I was just kidding. But no, Pete and I go way back, so very good, excellent job there. So communications, treasurer, Mr. Nusio.
Oh, a little more. Yeah, I took a little bit more. I just wanted to mention the three plays that we had in the district. Mamma Mia was done at Normandy, Wizard of Oz was done at Valley Forge, and The Addams Family was done at Parma. And it was fortunate that I got to all three of those. We have some really blooming thespians in our district, so it was a very nice thing. And, you know, all of this has seemed so extra exciting this year, because we missed so much of it for so long because of COVID, and everything coming back is really exciting. So kudos to all three of those casts and their advisors for great productions. I will mention that Mrs. Carpus had two blooming thespians of her own participating as munchkins in The Wizard of Oz, and they were adorable, so that was cute. Another very fun thing that I attended was the Young Entrepreneurs Event at, it was held at Normandy, it was for 5th through 7th graders in the school district, and these were students that were sort of like a science fair for entrepreneurs, and they all had a little business that they were, that they developed and answered special questions for, and they stood with their boards, they had all the displays about their individual businesses, and they talked to everybody, and I got to visit every single one of them. My goodness, impressive for children that age to be thinking along the lines that they are. Some of them are already selling products, you know, so it's pretty exciting, and it was very well done, sort of coordinated by the career tech department. So that was very fun. And I can't not talk about Winter Circle, which we all attended some part of Winter Circle. And that's the PTA event each year where all of the sponsors of the many scholarships in the Parma Council of PTA program are identified. And this is a year-long process for PTA. They work on this all year long, and then you get the applications, the kids fill them out, and they turn them in, and you evaluate them. Eventually, you get the names, but Winter Circle, you put the face to the names, and the sponsors announce who their winners are, and that's very, very exciting. Then the awards will actually be given at the scholarship dinner in a couple of weeks, but Winter Circles are a very special time, and our kids were just wonderful, you know, dressed up, you know, getting ready to go off to college, and this is exciting. This is the biggest PTA scholarship program in the state of Ohio, and I'm sure rivals most in the country. It's a big deal, and Winter Circle is a very fun part of it, so that was.
So all these things you've done, when do you sleep?
Well, we know that I don't, so too much.
So I have, I've honestly said since the very first Winter Circle, it is my favorite event of the year. My favorite moment of Winter Circle this year actually did not have to do with a student, but Mr. Rudolph. His face would be realized that the students don't know what they win. He was so like, that was one of the few, like, genuine, like, he had the biggest smile on his face, because this, I forget which school we were at, and her reaction was so authentic, and he was like, wait, she didn't know?
And they knew that they would want something, but they didn't know what. She had won two.
Yes.
So when her name got called the second time, there was just a surprise on her face. It was priceless. It was, it was cool.
It was. It was, and it was cool to see, kind of having, you know, you part of the team and then the fold and stuff like that, so it was neat. And is there anybody left from Forge here? No. Okay. I just have to say, we often get to see Normandy's lot full, like trick-or-treat, or, you know, all those different events. Parma's lots are often full from Ford, you know, different kinds of things. Very rare that Valley Forge's lots are completely full, and the Sunday performance of Wizard of Oz, every parking spot in the front lot, all the way to York Road, and the side lot was completely full and half of the back lot.
Oh, wow.
Yes, so.
Good attendance.
Yes, 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 yes. All right, that really is it.
Well, the fun part about, just mentioning about the plays, the, it wasn't just the casts of the high schools at Valley Forge. They also involved the elementary schools, that those children served as the munchkins.
They needed munchkins.
Yeah, they needed munchkins. So little people are better than big people for munchkins. So I thought that was a genius idea for going forward, to involve those little ones so that they look forward to this in the future, and we have more kids ready to participate in drama, and it fills up the parking lot, too.
I think it'll be really good would we have one new high school and four elementary schools, and we could have a play each quarter, and each of the elementary schools could rotate. With that, that's the end of communications.
Do we have any amendments to that? You still have treasurer, communication. I skipped right over.
I don't want to hear what you're saying.
I just have five-year forecast.
Oh, well, let's talk about that.
It'll be the next meeting. Who's the last one, but probably why we're talking about sustainability consolidation.
All right. Sorry about that. I'm skipping. Sorry.
I would like to point out that Sean, no, yes, that the board and the community, one of the beautiful things that's happened under Mr. Nusio is that we get very clear financial updates every month, that nothing, like, comes way out of left field. This is the biggest PTA scholarship program in the state of Ohio and I'm sure rivals most in the country. It's a big deal and Winner Circle is a very fun part of it, so that was
So all these things you've done, when do you sleep?
Well, we know that I don't, so too much.
So I have, I've honestly said since the very first Winner Circle, it is my favorite event of the year. My favorite moment of Winner Circle this year actually did not have to do with a student, but Mr. Ruda. His face would be realized that the students don't know what they win. He was so like, that was one of the few like genuine, like, he had the biggest smile on his face because this, I forget which school we were at.
Valley Forge.
Her reaction was so authentic and he was like, wait, she didn't know?
And they knew that they would want something, but they didn't know what. She had won two.
Yes.
So when her name got called the second time, it was just a surprise on her face. It was priceless, it was, it was cool.
It was, it was. And it was cool to see, kind of having, you know, you part of the team and then the fold and stuff like that, so it was neat. And is there anybody left from Forge here? No, okay. I just have to say, we often get to see Normandy's lot full, like trick-or-treat or, you know, all those different events. Parma's lots are often full from Ford, you know, different kinds of things. Very rare that Valley Forge's lots are completely full. In the Sunday performance of Wizard of Oz, every parking spot in the front lot, all the way to York Road and the side lot was completely full and half of the back lot.
Oh, wow.
Yes, so
Good attendance.
Yes, 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 yes. All right, that really is it.
Well, the fun part about, just mentioning about the plays, the, it wasn't just the casts of the high schools at Valley Forge. They also involved the elementary schools, that those children served as the munchkins.
They needed munchkins.
Yeah, they needed munchkins. So little people are better than big people for munchkins. So I thought that was a genius idea for going forward to involve those little ones so that they look forward to this in the future. And we have more kids ready to participate in drama and it fills up the parking lot, too.
I think it'll be really good when we have one new high school and four elementary schools and we could have a play each quarter and each of the elementary schools could rotate. With that, that's the end of Communications.
Do we have any amendments to that? You still have Treasurer, Communication.
I skipped right over.
I don't want to hear what you're saying.
Just a five-year forecast.
Oh, well, let's talk about that.
It'll be the next meeting. Who's the last one, but probably why we're talking about
Sorry.
I would like to point out that Sean, no, yes, that the board and the community, one of the beautiful things that's happened under Mr. Nusio is that we get very clear financial updates every month. That nothing like comes way out of left field, you know, which comes from Columbus, way out of left field and kind of gets us. So that is a comfort as a board member, knowing that we have a good idea of what it's going to look like because you keep a surprise every single one of them.
Thanks. No, thank you. Okay. Now, do we have any resolutions for adoption of amendments or anything like that today? Nothing, so we're going to move right on. We're going to move right on to public participation. At this point, I'm going to allow Mr. Gardner to come up, who's been waiting so patiently to address us. To come on up and state your name and your address and proceed with your topic, sir.
Well, thank you for the opportunity. This is Glenn Gardner, 2219 Brookdale Avenue. John Muir's in my backyard.
Okay.
1980, when I found out my wife was going to be pregnant, we bought a little brick ranch just for the ability of John Muir. Now, one of your considerations, I understand, is you're thinking about one central school, high school.
High school, yes, sir.
I went to Niagara Falls. They took Trifocal and LaSalle and incorporated it all into one central high school. And then much to their chagrin, they ended up putting a police station in the basement, so. But my question for you is, if you go with what you're considering, where are you going to get the bus drivers? And with the price of gas coming up and the wear and tear on those vehicles, are you looking at electric buses? These are the things, I don't know. I mean, you've been shot down twice by about 66%. You got seniors and you got people from Cleveland coming in that can't really afford that. In the last discussion, I heard you were looking at a 38-year levy. I don't know if that's changed all or not. My recommendation would be to sell Parma Senior to the city for rec center. Keep the two high schools and downsize on the elementary schools. I'm sure the nursing homes would love to buy those elementary schools and turn them into a nursing home, so.
Right.
That's the crux to what I'm saying. How is your enrollment in, you know, in competing with Constellation, are you up, down with the enrollment?
I'm going to ask for that.
So overall, we've declined. If you look at, well, from, I mean, we peaked at 26,000 students, right now we're about 9,400. We're actually though 100 students more right now than we were 100 last year this time. So we believe we're actually starting to stem that tide and start climbing a little bit. But overall, scientific models show us declining by the time we would open our new schools to about 8,800 students. We're at 9,400 right now. So there's a lot of different reasons to think, well, if you build new, could you get more kids back in? But to answer you honestly, from a scientific model, we don't fall off the cliff, but we continue to, you know, just kind of trickle down each year.
Yeah. Well, I know you put a lot of money in the mirror and throw to the elementary schools if you chop elementary, I don't know, which you know better than I, what the inform and figures look like and reducing it.
Yeah.
I heard, I talked, that my Parma Senior Councilwoman, she works for Seven Hills.
Kristen Saban.
Yeah. And I said, well, what about this drug mart on State Road where they bought that? And she says they're talking the next couple of months breaking ground on that, so. So that's a good situation, so. That's the crux of what I got to say and I appreciate the time for my input.
I do think that we probably email you some information that might help you further understand what's going on rather than us talk about it here at this meeting. But we can get that to you via email.
Okay.
I have his email.
Yeah, we have it too.
Roughly, what is the cost to put it on the ballot?
That's actually what we're discussing over the next couple of weeks in terms of phasing. We know that the full bond issue right now would be 11 mils, which is really very high and quite frankly, not a comfortable ask for any of us. So we're trying to decide, do we want to go elementary first, do we want to go high school first, do we want to go middle school first?
No, what, the Board of Elections for you to put it on the ballot?
I would have to ask them, I don't know.
Yeah.
What's a typical one?
It's minimal.
Fifty grand to answer? I don't know if you're honest with it.
It's not significant to put it on the ballot unless it's a special election and this is, we're not asking for special elections.
All right, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. All right, so. All right, so I'll move to adopt Resolution 2022-05-150, approval of the written record proceedings from April 21, 2022, regular. And April 21, 2022, Special Board of Education meetings.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2022-05-150. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, roll call Mr. Nusio.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mrs. Brod.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Okay, we, Resolution 2022-05-150 has been approved. All right. Brings us to the curriculum, Mr. Brod.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. I move for the adoption of Resolution 2022-05-151, approval to enter into a contract between the Career and Technical Education Job Training Experiential Learning Program of the Parma City School District and Hyman.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2022-05-151. Any questions or comments from the board?
I can provide a little bit of detail. Duties will include working with the grocery manager, stacking shelves, rotating items facing shelves and checking dates. Students that are interested will also have the option to work in the front of the school bagging groceries as well as working in production packaging and the bakery.
All right, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call, Mr. Nusio.
Mrs. Brod.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, Resolution 2022-05-151 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of Resolution 2022-05-152, granting authority to the administration to enter into a contract with United Cerebral Policy for the 2021-2022 school year.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2022-05-152. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Mr. Nusio.
Mrs. Brod.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, Resolution 2022-05-152 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2022-05-153, Authorization Agreement for Assessment Software Subscriptions for the 2022-2023 school year.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2022-05-153. Any questions or comments from the board?
I can comment, none of these are new. We've been using these systems, I imagine, for a decade.
Okay. Anybody else? Questions? Roll call, Mr. Nusio.
Mrs. Brod.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Resolution 2022-05-153 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of Resolution 2022-05-154, Approval of Overnight Out-of-State/Out-of-Country Field Trip.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2022-05-154. Any questions or comments from the board?
I'm sorry, I know I keep counting, but I want to make another one. I really appreciate the efforts of Ms. Dorner here. This is really, what a great opportunity for kids. And I know we've really tried to shy away from these things for the last several years, but it's great to be able to sort of, you know, reopen that alley of opportunity. And I really, you know, thank her because it's a lot of organization, it's a lot of time that goes into this, she doesn't have to do it. And it's really, this is something these students will remember for really the rest of their lives. I mean, it's a defining moment of their high school experience. So thank you, Ms. Dorner.
Back on our dockets. Yeah, it's very good. Thank you. Roll call, Mr. Nusio.
Mrs. Brod.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes. Resolution 2022-05-154 has been approved.
Unless another board member has anything to discuss this evening, that will conclude curriculum.
Thank you, Mrs. Brod. Very good, this brings us to business, Mr. Ruda.
Yes, I move to adopt Resolution 2022-05-155, authorizing purchase of one 2023 Ford F-750 box truck for the maintenance department.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2022-05-155. Any questions or comments from the board? None, Mr. Nusio.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mrs. Brod.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Resolution 2022-05-155 has been approved.
Unless, excuse me, unless a board member has anything else to discuss, this concludes business.
Thank you, Mr. Ruda. This brings us to Mr. Kreis, Finance.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 2022-05-156, Approval of Supplemental Appropriations.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2022-05-156. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Mr. Nusio.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mrs. Brod.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, Resolution 2022-05-156 has been approved.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 2022-05-157, Acceptance of Contributions and Donations.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2022-05-157. Any questions or comments from the board? And of course, I'm going to say thank you, these fine people for donating stuff to our schools. It's very nice that you guys often remember us. There are some very generous donations up there from various families, so. And car wash, nice car wash, Manny Golf, this is in your, in the Iowan family. Very nice, very generous of you, thank you so much. Anybody else?
Yeah.
Oh, I covered it too. Roll call, Mr. Nusio.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mrs. Brod.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, Resolution 2022-05-157 has been approved.
Unless any other board member has anything to discuss, this concludes Finance for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Kreis, and it's good to see you.
Thank you.
Supreme Justice, the legislation, Mrs. Carpus.
I do have something today. So as I think everyone knows, the USDA had, Congress had approved waivers, which essentially is what we've been operating under for the breakfast and lunch for our students. So Congress failed to extend the child nutrition waivers. Earlier this week, USDA announced that they could make some waivers available on a state-by-state basis under their permanent authority for the summer and next school year. So it will not include fiscal waivers, free meals for all students or higher reimbursements. It may include non-congregant meal service, parent pickup and flexibility in scheduling of times of meals, so like food distribution. The applicant must be the state and not a school district. And Congress is still discussing whether or not they are willing to pass additional waiver authority, but it appears unlikely. So unless anybody helps, and congratulations to everyone that won their primaries across the state of Ohio locally and so on, so.
Did I have to see your name on some, Mr. Kreis, and your name on something? What were those things?
Pre-seen committee man.
Oh, is that a big deal?
Not, not really.
Not really.
It's more work he signed up for not to get paid to do.
I was volunteer.
You're a volunteer again?
Well, I already was prior to that one. I've already been on it.
Only two, but that wasn't
Oh, I was for 40, 40 years.
Oh, we were, we're elected.
Yeah, I didn't have that.
Cool.
I wasn't going to go for that for, for free.
So, Mrs. Brod, you ready? So just, thank you, Mrs. Carpus, for the legislation. Appreciate it for a few months, get up on tangent there. Human Resources, Mrs. Brod.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. I move for the adoption of Resolution 2022-05-158, Approval of the following certificated exhibits, Confirmation of Stipendate Amounts.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2022-05-158. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Mr. Nusio.
Mrs. Brod.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus. Mrs. Carpus.
Why is the
Blank.
Why is it blank?
There's a different one, she might have just, because I'm looking at a whole
This is the one that normally has a large grouping.
Right.
We never show the exhibits.
Would you like to see it? No, it, I didn't, I don't have my computer up.
Go ahead, just read them so we're being transparent. I don't read the names, but, so these are stipends for youth sports coaching funded by ESER, special instruction for a student during summer. Elementary Summer Academy of Enrichment and Learning. Elementary, oh, there, there it is.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
Okay, sorry. Wait, I just, no, I just was confused, I was blank.
We did have that on our agendas that we
Yep, that's what, that's, but that's what I was like, wait a minute, did something change?
Okay, roll call, Mr. Nusio.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, Resolution 2022-05-158 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2022-05-159, Acceptance of Certificated Retirement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2022-05-159. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, roll call, Mr. Nusio.
Mrs. Brod.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, Resolution 2022-05-159 has been approved. And is she here? Was she here?
No, we're doing these things all
We're doing all of that.
I think, first meeting in June? First meeting in June.
Okay, great, so I'm getting ahead of myself. Go ahead.
I'm always hesitant to accept some of these retirements.
Right, right.
Okay, I move for the adoption of Resolution 2022-05-160, Confirmation of Certificated Administrative Appointments Replacements.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2022-05-160. And any questions or comments from the board?
You want me to comment now, Mr. Keating, or do you want to vote first?
Maybe we should vote first. Works for me. Okay. So no comments from the board number yet? Okay, Mr. Nusio.
Mrs. Brod.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, Resolution 2022-05-160 has been approved. And apparently it's
Well, we're very grateful for your approval of both of Mr. Green, who obviously has served us in a number of different positions in his time here. And we're thrilled that he will continue at Greenbrier in his current Dean of Students role, where he has really made himself a valued member of that staff. But tonight, we really have a promotion that we want to celebrate and it's certainly a long-deserved promotion. Chris Keating has been with us really his entire career, Parma person through and through. Parents still live in Parma. And Chris is really, he is someone that has really impressed us with his tenacity, desire to learn and really ability to diversify his skill sets. A lot of times, folks that are in sort of an assistant role or a dean role, you know, they handle discipline and they handle PBIS and that's all great because that's really important to school climate. But Chris was able to really show us how he's become an instructional leader as well. It's really one of our really core responsibilities for principals is that it's not a managerial position. Certainly there are management aspects to it, but we need folks to be able to make instruction better. Because the only way to make achievement better is to make instruction better. And Chris has really taken the opportunity with the guidance of, and I believe they're both here, Mrs. Jewell at Parma Park, Dr. Abducatar at Runwood, to really learn more than just that climate piece. And so we put him through really what was a pretty rigorous interview. We wrote, especially the second round, we wanted to try to make someone cry. And Chris really shined. I mean, the first, the first round was very close. We had two very, very strong candidates, Chris being one of them. And in the second, he really showed the gap in his knowledge, his experience as being a true leader in all aspects of educational administration. So with that, we'd like to introduce Chris Keating to you as the next principal of Runwood Elementary. If you answered all those interview questions as well as you did, you can certainly give us 30 seconds of the
Thirty seconds, well, President Vaughn, Vice President Carpus, distinguished members of the board, Dr. Smalek, Mrs. Strathcoe, Dr. Schneider, thank you for this opportunity. As Dr. Smalek said, I have been, I graduated from Normandy in 1997.
Yay.
Started my, my teaching career at Pleasant Valley Elementary in 2001, worked at Thorough Park in Shiloh. And then I began my administrative career in 2017 at Thorough Park And then I began my administrative career in 2017 at Thorough Park in Pleasant Valley. So, it is an honor, I'm humbled to accept this position. I'm excited, I am feeling a lot of emotions right now, but gratitude is the biggest one. So, thank you for this opportunity, and I will work 100%, 100% every single day to make you guys proud.
I'm sure you will so much.
Thank you.
I want one of those.
For me or him?
No.
From him.
All right. Big smiles, feel it, two, one, two, three, and one more, one, two, three, go.
Thank you.
At least a drink.
Mrs. Brod. No, we have to put it up. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Kreis, thank you.
Were you the one that cried?
Was I the one that cried? I will never admit to that.
And nor should you. All right, it's very good. That's always nice. We're going to have a baking.
Hi, Barbara Sharon Dale.
We're going to... We're leaving the audience.
We foundation people support each other.
Oh, absolutely, you should.
All right, Mrs. Brod still has...
All right, I move for the adoption of resolution 2022-05-161, confirmation of change in certificated assignment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2022-05-161. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Mr. Nusio.
Mrs. Brod.
Yes.
Mrs. Carvis.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, resolution 2022-05-161 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of resolution 2022-05-162, authorization to employ new replacement certificated staff for the Primacy School District.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2022-05-162. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, roll call Ms. Nusio.
Mrs. Brod.
Yes.
Mrs. Carvis.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, resolution 2022-05-162 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2022-05-163, non-renewal of substitute teacher eliminated contracts.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2022-05-163. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, roll call Ms. Nusio.
Mrs. Brod.
Yes.
Mrs. Carvis.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, resolution 2022-05-163 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of resolution 2022-05-164, approval of the following classified exhibits, confirmation of classified appointments replacements, confirmation of class, change of classified assignments, confirmation of classified resignations, approval of classified non-compensated leave of absence, approval of classified stipend.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2022-05-164. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Mr. Nusio.
Mrs. Brod.
Yes.
Mrs. Carvis.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, resolution 2022-05-164 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of resolution 2022-05-165, authorization to employ new replacement classified staff for the Primacy School District.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2022-05-165. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, roll call Ms. Nusio.
Mrs. Brod.
Yes.
Mrs. Carvis.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, resolution 2022-05-165 has been approved.
Unless another board member has something to discuss this evening, that will conclude human resources.
Thank you, Mrs. Brod. This brings us to policies, Mrs. Carvis.
Yes, I move to adopt resolution 2022-05-166, approval of the following technical changes. Policy 0123, Code of Ethics, policy 0133, Judicial, policy 2411, Guidance of Counseling, policy 3139, Staff Discipline, policy 3170.01, Employee Assistance Program, EAP, policy 6145, Borrowing, and policy 6150, Tuition Income.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2022-05-166. Any questions or comments from the board?
Real quick, these were driving me insane because I was reading through the old ones and the new ones, and I couldn't find a difference. So, I had to call them in, I'm like, what, I don't see any changes. It's just the updating of that. So, that's what all these are, it's just updating them. Yeah, it was driving me insane, I'm like, I was doing something wrong, I can't find a difference.
We've spent four years explaining that every time.
The worst word search ever.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that comment. Anybody else? No? Okay, roll call Ms. Nusio.
Mrs. Carvis.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mrs. Brod.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, resolution 2022-05-166 has been approved.
Okay.
We have a first reading.
Yep, this is the first reading of the following revised policy. Policy 2465, Suspension Expulsion of Disabled Students. So, I would like to point out with this one really quickly that in the first reading, make sure you take a look to read it, the title has also changed, the first and first language, among many other things that went into bringing this policy current. And then the following, first reading of the following revised policies, policy 2370, Educational Options, policy 2421.01, Students as Trainees, and policy 3213, Student Supervision and Welfare. All of these were updated language, reflect current practice, the ORC, anything like that. So, it was bringing it up to, up to some.
Yeah, up to some.
Yep, so unless anyone else has anything for policy, this concludes policy for the evening.
Great, excellent, thank you, Mrs. Carvis. This is the board, Mrs. Brod.
I move to adopt resolution 2022-05-167 in recognition of Staff Appreciation Week.
We have a...
Second, sorry.
Motion and a second to adopt resolution 2022-05-167. Any questions or comments from the board? I was going to bring this up during communications, but we got lengthy...
Couldn't we read this?
Can we read it, the whole thing?
Well...
I'll tell you, I can tell you, I appreciate our staff. I think we have one of the finest staffs in the state. They often go above and beyond. I saw many colleagues, former colleagues, I should say, getting their foundation grants and stuff like that. So, I know they go above and beyond to try to do things that are good for our students. And I just, you know, we have, hands down, one of the best staffs in the state.
I have said that since long before I was a board member, that I would put our staff up against anyone, anywhere, any day. They are phenomenal.
I think what's unfortunate is we don't get an opportunity to express our gratitude nearly as often as we feel it and as they deserve it. Because the work that, so much of the work that is done goes, I don't want to say taken for granted, because I don't ever feel that we take them for granted, but it's part of, you know, the everyday stuff that goes on. But I just really hope that all of our teachers, all of our support staff, all of our administration, everybody really recognizes that they are appreciated and it's why things work so well around here. Thank you all.
Wasn't this week, it was like starting on the first, like it was Administrator Day on Sunday?
Administrator Day was on Sunday, and then Staff Appreciation Week is...
And our PTAs, this would be important to note, our PTAs, PTSAs have done phenomenal for our...
Oh, yeah, that was always a great time when I was teaching, they had that little luncheon.
Yeah, and there's been stuff every day planned for all the different buildings and the... It's interesting, it's called the lunch. No, we have not moved on yet.
All right, so any other comments?
I just think they do a great job, and I appreciate them a lot more than I say. I really, I really do.
That's very good, thank you. Roll call Ms. Nusio.
Mrs. Brod.
Yes.
Mrs. Carvis.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, resolution 2022-05-167 has been approved. And we appreciate our staff. And let's see, any information impressed by board members?
No.
All right, any questions we read on the record? No? We don't need the executive second. So, oh, this brings us to a big one. I move to adopt resolution 2022-05-169. Did you adjourn this meeting?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2022-05-169. Roll call Ms. Nusio.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Carvis.
Yes.
Mrs. Brod.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Meeting adjourned.